I will call them in your order and invite you to join the board as we stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with due justice for all.
Okay, at this time, how do we roll call?
Welcome Boyd.
Here.
Arthur Zerbi.
Here.
Jerry Wong.
Here.
Mike Reiter.
Here.
Phil Cassidy.
Here.
Okay, we have time allotted for our community open session. I limit it to four hours, or four more minutes. If we have more time, we can back over, but let's start. State your name just for the record.
Um, there he is, please. My wife asked me, she came here and asked me about the collections. One is she made a comment a few days ago about the plant dumping signs on. They were for a road, what I thought from that problem on Cedar Street. Uh, we can go over the turnpike. There was actually two signs there. And we're wondering why somebody decided that we needed to have signs there because of the kind of... Is it something that the tangent there, the dollar, and the houses there? Or is the state pretty glum? Did anybody know? That's my question, the wife asked me.
They were put there, they had trouble with people dumping there. Now, I am not sure if it was the state or if the dollar did, but people were...
Was this before the dump got blew down, or...
Uh, it was in progress already, phase one. And I'm not sure if the dollar requested the state do it, or if the state just came in and did it. But yes, they had trouble with people dumping stuff there. There was yard waste and just junk.
Because it seems odd to me, because there's already enough place to pull over on the side of the road there. And then you go up over the turnpike, and you're not going to stop there because somebody could come over the turnpike and hit you or something like that. So who's stopping here and who's stopping over there?
Are the signs, are the signs objectivable?
Well, my wife's, her comment is that it's sort of really kind of weird and, uh, why, because these little signs? And whether the people are really dumping here. And my second question is, you know, to the roadmaster. Cedar Street was repaved, and it was done a little differently this time. And it was just a bunch of, the cinder was put down first, and then you put the, you know, the panel on top of it, or...
Yes, it was, uh, the process was called a cave sealed. They come in, and they oil and chip the road, and which seals everything up. And then they come back over with a microservicing, which is a thin layer of asphalt, concrete mix. And, um, and it's, it looks, it doesn't look as great as at first, but...
That's what my wife was complaining about.
If you, uh, if you want to really see what it looks like, if you go out here development there, go to Dolberg and make a left. When you come out, the next stop sign, it's, is that Oakmont, or?
Church.
No, it's not Church Street. Which one wraps around the backside of it?
Rayville.
Rayville. That same thing was done on that one a year ago, and that's what it was. It just, the microservicing, you don't think it's moving, but it does. It, it levels itself out and...
Yeah, it's usually doing that now. I drove over it tonight.
Yeah.
What if they're like normal on there, the way it was maybe kind of through?
Yeah, it, it, time is, is an essence for that stuff. It just, it moves over time. You get a, you come in the next spring, and it's, it's going to look like fresh rock top, really. I mean, development, uh, just across the street here, same stuff, microservicing on top.
Okay.
And it just, just takes some time to kind of level itself out.
All right, that's one more question. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on into, we have a guest tonight from the Adams Town Library.
Hello, and thank you for having the library here tonight. As always, we very much appreciate your support of the library. We hope we will be able to continue supporting the library. But just to show you where your dollars go, I'd like to scurry up just a few statistics. We served over ninety-nine thousand patrons last year. We had over a hundred and ninety thousand items borrowed. From Retna, thirty-six thousand items were borrowed. So that's really good. We offered over four hundred programs to the community with over eight thousand residents in attendance. And we're doing really well with the new library. Uh, we've raised so far eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of the one point five million dollars that we need. We applied to seventy-five organizations for grants to send out funding requests to businesses. So we're doing well there. And we have to raise money somehow. So this is sweet little Kylie. She and her friends all summer long did little lemonade stands for the library. And I think in total, they raised a hundred dollars. But it's so endearing and so sweet of what our community is about that I have to show this. We did a terrific summer reading program, very educational this year. Twelve hundred and seventy-nine children signed up. And for Retna, three hundred of those kids came to the library. So your population is really huge at our library. So as you might imagine, it was all about the three Rs, but it was a lot about critical thinking skills and being able to solve problems. And I think this slide really shows that well. We rarely get pictures like this because the kids just wield too much. We can't, we can't really phone in, but looking at how engaged she is, how intense she is on solving problems. This is a deconstruction program where they're actually taking apart that particular item's stand. They took apart that old bone and some computer notice, and then put them back together again. So she's really into it, really wanted to work, and we do this all the time. We also are offering a thousand books for kindergarten. We've been doing this for years in conjunction with the United Way. And so far, a hundred kids have signed up for this program. So that means a hundred thousand books were read. So by the time these kids get to keep the garden, they know ten thousand words or they can read. And that's what we want. That's the goal of the program. Children's Storytime, this is so cute. It's just wonderful. These kids get to become dexterous and crafty, to be able to use their fingers to make these crafts. It's not just fun for them, but the goal is to get them to become really dexterous and skilled. Also, they have to learn to work together. And the association of colleges and employers state that working together is the number one thing that they look for in applications. Sure, they might want you to be able to read a spreadsheet or to do whatever, but that is number one. If you can prove that you can work together in a team, then your chances of getting hired and getting into college are much better. I don't think people realize that we proctor exams for colleges and universities all over the country. And we work with credit card dot, oh, sorry, credit, what is it? Collegecredit.com. And they offer veterans free exams, and then we proctor for free as well for veterans. And then they reimburse us twenty-five dollars for doing that, which is really a great resource. So we get to thank our service men and women, and we get to meet them and talk with them. It's just a wonderful resource for our veterans. And of course, we do passport processing. We have so many services that we take in the fly, however, to go through all of them. But this is just the highlight. And then, you know, we were talking about Hoopla. I mentioned that last time I was here. Five hundred thousand items in this database. Uh, we can all look, everybody in this room can actually view the same movie at the same time. So there's no holds, no waiting. The Adams Town Area Library has to be your home library. You go in, create, use your name and password from a website, which is addstamarealibrary.org. And then you can get started. You download to your phone, whatever device you like, smart TV. So if you want to get rid of your cable, this is the way to do it. Big cost savings. Yes.
This is free?
Oh, yes. Everything we have in the library is free, unless it's underwise indicated as special program.
Oh, God, I mean, is, is that program or a company or what?
It is, the company is called Midwest Tape, and they make audio books for the library industry. And then they put out this service just for, I guess, I guess, as a, you know, somebody who doesn't work at a library, I can get a personal account. But then I would pay two billion dollars per item that I download. Where this way, we pay for it with money that comes into the library, and then our patrons have it for free. For now, we certainly want to eat it that way. I think that's a wonderful resource.
So if, if you have this set on your home computer or on your laptop, you can watch movies, TV programs, or read books and stuff like that?
You can. For free. It won't cost you anything. Uh, you're allowed to have ten downloads per month. I guess if usage continues to grow, we might have to repeal that back to eight. I really don't want to do that.
But it's making it appear unusable?
Yes. We have three hundred downloads per month, and that number rises every month. Did you have any more? Are you good?
Yeah, I'm looking at this movies. Is, is there like a, uh, book of movies you can choose from, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Or just in the movies that you can...
You can, once you click on that, it will open up in categories. Movies, TV programs, comic books, audio books, downloadable books. And then you click on whatever tab you want, let's say movies, and then you'll get a whole cascade of items in alphabetical order, however you want to look it up. Or it might come up as comedy, drama, that sort of thing. Stop by the library, we do a demo, or just go onto our website and sign up. And we can check it out, we have any problems at all, we're happy to help. Okay? And then, as my last, final slide, just what we're going to be trying to do in 2018. We're going to expand our online presence. We're going to add more dollars to overdrive, and as you can download, you need books. But those are very up-to-date titles. And for Hoopla, we're going to add just a little bit more money to that as well. We're looking for new children's librarian. Our librarian is planning to retire, but come back to us just part-time, just for a few hours a week. Laura Russell and Apollo Loos are our new tech trainers. Kyle has left. And we're partnering with the Calvin High School for additional STEM program. They have a big STEM program there, and they often help us, and you'll certainly take them upon that. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for coming out.
Yes, thank you for having us. Turn this off. There we go.
Get it off.
I have to make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Okay, we had a motion to approve and second, does anybody say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, you have a copy of the bills, and you have updated total.
Mr. Motion, you paid the bills in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and four hundred and fifty...
He said it's gone. He said six hundred and eighty-two dollars. I thought it. Must be that it's been changed.
It's right there in front of you.
Yeah.
Four hundred and sixty-five now.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go, thank you.
Thirty-one cents.
Okay, I second that.
I got the one out of the book here.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, we had a motion to approve the bills of one hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. And a second, does anybody say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have your reports. You have your roadmaster's report. I don't necessarily want to talk about the aluminum planks now, or when we do the parking rec.
Yeah.
Now?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to swing by there, but you had mentioned earlier of a concrete pad with aluminum structure with planks.
Yes, well, that was, we had gotten, I had gotten an estimate midsummer for PSN sports for aluminum planks. And, well, their estimate came in nine thousand dollars. And I was like, uh, really shocked by the price. So I was like, well, I saw regular aluminum bleachers, you could find it for like six grand. That would seat just as many people, you just have to do a concrete pad for them to sit on. So I was in discussion with the park board about it, and I wanted, you know, just trying to do a little more research on it. So I did more research, and I ended up finding the planks for a lot cheaper. I did get an estimate for a pad, but it was like three thousand dollars, and we would do most of the work except for actually pouring it. And, uh, so I, I found another aluminum plank that's a lot cheaper, and, and so it's just not, not really logical to go, go that way anymore. Looking at the cost, well, six thousand less.
Well, the only reason I said that, I kind of liked that idea of the concrete pad. You eliminate all weeding and trimming around the, uh...
Around the bleachers, yes.
And stuff. So your, your proposal right now is just replacing the wood that goes across the concrete block.
Right. And the park board's thought process on that was, uh, four or five years ago. There's, there's three sections of bleachers over there. The middle section's, section with the sign. The aluminum planks were already done in the format four years ago or so. And their concern was, okay, well, we do this one, we do that one, well, we'd have to do that center one. So those aluminum planks that were fought for that one would virtually be a waste, because unless we build more bleachers, the rest of them would be all aluminum already. And they just thought it'd be, it'd be extra money spent that wouldn't happen.
But the aluminum bleacher set that you looked at, the component, did they have a walk-up section on each end, or? I'm just, uh...
Yeah, they had, come on, let me look. Set, no, I think I have it here. Yeah, set, uh, set I looked at, it was just bleachers had a fence rail around the back. Didn't have stairs, you can get ones with stairs in the center and stuff, but it didn't have any of that fancier stuff. It was just plain Janey bleachers with aluminum fence around the back. And you go the route with the, the steps through the center and stuff, and they even have, you know, ones that are ADA accessible for the lower bleachers there. You, you ended up spending a lot more, more for them. They go up around nine thousand dollars to, plus per, per one. But they do seat, um, like a hundred people or something like that.
Okay, what, any comments from the board? Because right now, you're basically just replacing the wood. The cinder block stepped the way they are is still there.
Yeah, the cinder block is still there, just replacing the wood. They did put a lot of the bleachers throughout both parks, and we have two more to go.
What do you think, Jerry?
Well, I, I was thinking that you could do a hardscape wall out along the road, and you could fill it in and make a level concrete pad. You'd set bleachers there, and it might be more, uh, pleasing appearance, and maybe more safety for people going up and down. You'd have to be a fence on top of the hardscape wall, but it would, it would be a lot more money, but, um... But this, this would be the most economical. If, if the, the cinder block stacked up the way they are is adequate for long-term safety. And, um, I've sat in them bleachers, but I don't recall if the, the heights were similar to...
How's it ever sad?
I know they put the fence behind them because the walls were some, it sloped toward the road. And, and if you did a concrete pad, you'd have to build like a retaining wall out along there, you know, nice hardscape wall. You could put concrete pads and set bleachers there. I, I was imagining something that would, that'd be a little more pleasing than just the, of course, the, of course, cinder block.
Yeah, I don't, I don't argue with that. Another, another concern the park board had was, uh, it would take away from the original look of the park.
What would, what would?
Replacing the cinder block...
Oh, okay.
Bleachers and stuff, putting a concrete pad and going on the bleachers and, you know, I don't know how, I didn't grow up in this area. I don't know how long Ben's does look like it has, but they were worried that it's just going to, it's going to change the appearance too much. But, I mean, you got to change something sometime.
The grade slopes a ways. Anytime someone would lose a ball underneath the bleachers, it rolls down to the road.
Yeah.
And that's always been a problem.
I was thinking, you said one of the larger units might cost nine thousand dollars.
Uh, one of the larger ones would, I mean, we had to do some...
Seats a hundred people?
Yeah, this one here that I had looked at, uh, it's five high, twenty-seven foot long. That seats ninety people and would be sixty-five hundred dollars. I can show you a picture of what it looks like, so I don't know if you recall, it was in one of the reports. But that's what that one would look like right here as compared to what we have.
That's really nuts.
And then you can, they can, they get, they can get really fancy, but, you know, sixty-five hundred is like a base cost, and then it goes up from there, depending on all what, what would be wanted.
Well, I can do that thing about here with all the openers. Could we replace them all with one section of...
Uh, it had to be, I had to look at it more detail. I'm not saying it wouldn't be, it might not be. To do them all at one time, you're saying all three sections?
Now, can you replace them all with one section? That's what it has to be.
Not necessarily, oh, I had to look at that. I don't know if you can bolt them together, because it's kind of, it goes around the backside of the ball dime in there, so it's not like it's straight. You'd have to get it, I mean, it's like a curved section, which I don't know if they make that.
Well, I think you would do three.
Yeah, three separate ones, kind of like, like it's laid out now.
But you could do a wall back there.
Yeah, yeah.
Make it level the whole way around, just have three sections sit there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, look for what height, sure.
You wouldn't have any weeding and trimming and...
Yeah, the maintenance, you know, it, yeah, it, your, your at first cost would be way high, but in the end, you know, you're talking, you're not string trimming or weeding underneath them, and virtually, you know, maintenance. I would imagine sometime down the line, those cinder blocks could fail, I don't know. I mean, it, it's possible.
I think they've been there a long enough on the...
I don't know how long they've been up, I think thirty years plus.
I just wonder if someone would slip between them sometime and then hurt themselves or fall down. What do you think?
You mean the cinder block set are there now, or?
No, the planks the way they are now. I think, I think there's more space between the seats with the cinder block planks in there far, and then the engineered scaffolding.
The only thing I'm thinking is if that's the nine thousand dollar stuff, that picture?
That's sixty-five hundred.
And then with concrete, is that for one section?
That'd be for one section, be sixty-five hundred dollars, and I got an estimate for me and G and G roughly around another twenty-five hundred bucks for them to do concrete. And we would virtually do all the work, they would just, you know, pour the concrete.
So?
So you'd spend, you know...
So for the two, you're looking at probably pushing at eighteen thousand dollars.
Thousand, just for the two.
It definitely will cost more, it'll cost twice, not too much. The question is if, if the appearance, um, you could do the hard gas or hardscape wall yourselves.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, retaining wall is not that hard. Yeah, I see what you mean, do a retaining wall. Yeah, because I was going to have, when I had E and G give me an estimate, I was going to have to do a concrete, tie that concrete wall into that. But yeah, we could do a retaining wall and...
Rubber in the, around the bleachers.
And maybe I play around that. Oh, you mean instead of pouring a concrete pad, do like a stone base and then put a rubber mat on top, and then set the bleachers right on? Uh, that, yeah, I don't know. Because with these, I was thinking about, if we would do a concrete pad, we could anchor them to the concrete then. That way, get a freak windstorm or something, we don't have to worry about them taking off on us.
Should we ask them to go back and rethink it?
What they're really after.
Well, the park board's after just replacing the planks.
Right.
That's what the park board's after.
But they see in a different picture, don't they see?
I guess my question would be is the same as what you guys are thinking, is that it's almost like when you want to do an addition to an older house. You know, you want to do that addition, but yet you got to bring it off the coat as well.
Right.
So there's obviously some safety concerns on the old bleachers. Now you go and you replace the planks, you're not really bringing it any safer, you're just making it the same as it was before. So if in fact somebody falls, then comes back to the township and says, hey, you already addressed this blunt, so you didn't do anything, now we're going to come back on you, what are you going to do? That would be my own concern.
The biggest safety issue, we've done the one in the middle.
Yeah.
There was very little room for somebody to slip between that, the way it's constructed.
Is that different than the end ones?
Middle one, we already put the aluminum planking on the exit. We did it four or five years ago.
Yeah, that's something.
Uh, made a big difference.
Yeah, it makes it look sharp.
The safety issue in what they're looking at is the actual planks themselves. If me and you go on and start jumping up and down, we'd have them all busted. They're bad.
Are you talking about the wooden ones?
The wooden.
Okay.
They're not going to bring the aluminum.
No, no, the lumens are very sturdy.
That's the big safety issue, is the planking. There's planks over there, I'm sure, if I stepped on them, they'd sag pretty much.
They do, and they, they...
Yeah, they move. They were, I was walking on them, and they're, they're very unsafe right now.
They are.
Well, my, my concern was, what I recalled was like the bottom, where you stood, I mean, the steps were exactly, they're twelve and they're twelve. So like directly straight down, there's nothing underneath it, you know? You could easily just slip, you know, there's no toe stop or anything. You could be up on the, near the top, and if you weren't careful, and you slip, your leg went down between the two treads. I thought maybe these engineered scaffolding might have larger overlapping areas, so you have less chance to go down between them.
That may have, well, they do, if there is, I don't know if there is too much space. This one doesn't show it. They have, they have, they have that slot covered, so that people can't slip that...
Yeah, yeah. See, right now, you got the cinder block, so you got the tread, they're, they actually don't overlap, do they? There's, you know, it leaves a pretty wide spot to potentially slip down.
I don't think this is really an issue of saving money. I think what we really want to do is upgrade, upgrade the park. I mean, the park fund does have the money. And this is a time when we could upgrade the appearance of it.
Yeah.
Still, let them come back, yes, to the... Tell them that, yeah, where's Levi?
Come here shortly.
Okay, okay, okay. Um, yeah, I, I think that, like you said, when we talked about the slab and... Um, yeah, I, I think that, like you say, when we talked about the slab and engineered scaffolding, I was, or.
So that was bleachers?
Yeah, bleachers. I was thinking I could really make that, dress it up.
I think it would look nice.
Yeah, and, but that's, I should have looked at what you did.
I have a picture of what the metal section looks like.
Okay. But, but yeah, let's, let's just ask you to revisit that.
See, I see a big, okay. How does this compare to your picture of the engineered bleachers? Uh, would be not side by side, but.
I think the idea of the answer on the top too. If there are kids.
See, this is of course the old, but this big gap.
Yeah.
Is always scary, you know, if you're walking here, you gotta be careful you're gonna slip.
They have it too.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah. Maybe not quite as.
They might have more protection at the top.
Yeah. Or is the other?
You did put the fencing on the top.
Yeah.
All the way around.
Well, I think, um, obviously this month or next month won't affect whether you have it for next spring.
No, no, I was, it was a project that I was looking probably to do possibly this winter, but you know, we still have time.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments for Rootmaster?
Would, would you usually be looking to do all three at once?
Well, I think, again, again, I already saw this landscape wall that went the whole corner and you could actually put Beaumont Park sign on the wall.
That's right.
You'd put a fence on top of the hardscape, then you'd have your concrete there and you could set your engineered bleachers across there, but yeah, it would be all three.
Yeah.
If you did all three, that would be like nine thousand a unit?
Uh, well, it's gonna be cheaper not doing a concrete wall, it'd be with the hardscape wall, you get the stone, I mean, it's probably gonna come down a little, little cheaper and the center bleachers aren't as big. You're still probably gonna be looking at around eighteen, twenty thousand probably.
Maybe even more.
Maybe, yeah, it's, it's hard to say, there's, I'm throwing numbers out of my head here, but.
I guess take a look at it, we, we, we're not committing to, to that.
Okay.
Yet. Did you, uh, is your petitions in the park and rec, do you want to talk about?
I, I'm still working.
Okay.
With that one act.
Is that it, for the engineers report?
Rootmaster.
All right, sorry, Rootmaster. Now, the engineers report.
Thank you. You have my report October the fourth, I have several items on page four and one additional item that is not listed on there, I'll read those for public. Item number one is the Robert Holman Stormwater Management Project, received a stormwater management agreement and issued a financial security recommendation, the amount of six thousand dollars. Item number two is the Marvin Orsh Stormwater Project, issued a financial security recommendation in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Item three is the Wilmer Lead Lot Add-on Plan, we received a memorandum of understanding for that lot add-on plan. Item four is the John David Hoover Stormwater Management Project, received a memorandum of understanding and a stormwater management agreement. And item five, which is not listed, is the Philip Snyder Stormwater Project, we issued a release request for the financial security and a letter dated October ninth, the amount of five thousand dollars for that project.
And that was the Philip Snyder Stormwater?
Stormwater, correct.
Okay, any, anyone want to discuss either of them or can we move to a motion to approve it? Move the action? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the five items that are listed for action. Okay, the motion was made, second, does the paper say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have their, we have your SEO and then your zoning. Levi's busy. Do you use half the letter that Levi?
Just, I put it at your table. There's two of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You have one there too.
Oh, arts here.
Yep, and you have one too.
Oh, I have one too. Why am I stealing notes?
I don't know.
Well, um, the first item in regards to a boat that was parked in the trailer, that's been moved. And then there's a, there was a notice given out violation for a camper parked in the front yard driveway. And, um, we talked about this last month because I'd gotten a number of complaints and we said, wait, if it's not moved till this month, we'll deal with it. Apparently now he has committed to move it by the twelfth, which is Thursday. I'm not sure why he couldn't have it moved by today, but, um, and he noticed my, uh, recommendation, um, because there was a verbal commitment before and nothing happened. So, we need a little pause to really, uh, fully believe it, until I see it, so. Well, what action would we actually do if it's not moved by, by the, uh, twel- twelfth, which is when he's saying he would move it, right?
Right.
If it's not moved by the twelfth.
Well, let me just first date that in the letter that you issued, a number of, you know, notice violation for the last thirty days, who are carrying, who's our hearing for? We're telling you, send the letter.
Send the letter.
So, so we have to run thirty days from that date before we can do anything, you know, in a way of enforcement, in a, you know, sort of DJ action or in a court. I mean, I don't listen.
It would have an extra week on the block.
But, you know, after that, it would be, your option would be a civil complaint before the district office.
October nineteenth.
Yes, as we had previously done for the property.
Well, the, uh, the neighbor's complaining that he's been, he's been listing complaints for months and we just don't do anything. But we bend over backwards as much as we can, I know. Let him have the thirty day appeal time.
He's entitled to that.
He's entitled to that.
Yeah.
I would say that there's an appeal for move by October nineteenth, that we started enforcement action, so I, I recommend the board authorize, uh, you know, enforcement action contingent on it.
Well, I think we should too, I mean, that's what the neighbor's been requesting and, and we haven't worked for him. We've been pacifying the guy with the camper and not the guy who's been complaining, so if it not moved after the thirty day, uh, appeal process, I recommend make a motion that he would, he would take action.
There's a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion. Okay, we have the motion to take action after the thirty day, uh, appeal.
So we'll come in and cross.
We have the motion, was second, does the paper say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have the chickens at Sunoco have been penned up. And, uh, no actions required at this time. We have one-ten Andrews Way, I, I received a complaint again on this property last week, Thursday night. Um, and I'm getting a little frustrated too because they moved, they moved in there last spring, wasn't it? When Levi and I went out there and we met with them and I told them very clear that those buildings were agricultural buildings, they were chicken houses and they could use them for chicken houses, but if they use them for commercial, they would have to get a use occupancy permit. And because there's never, there never was a building permit drawn on them buildings, they should be inspected to make sure they're, they're safe and they meet current building codes. The gentleman said he's working on it, they're gonna do that. So months went by and they started remodeling some of the buildings. They still don't have a, a use occupancy permit for the occupancy use that they want to, well, we don't know what the, the cata, uh, classification, what they're gonna, uh, use them for. So Levi sent them a, a notice that they needed, or no, you called them, you talked to them on the phone, they need a building permit and then an inspection, and he said he'd come down and get one. That has gone on and up and has happened. And, uh, so we continue to get complaints from across the street. Um, I think, um, I suggest we go back to and file a civil complaint or something that just reinforces that they cannot occupy the building until they get a use occupancy permit and also get a verification that the building meets current, uh, building construction codes.
What is the address, is it one-ten or one-oh-nine?
You see two places?
Yeah, one-ten and then C.
And one-oh-nine comes from Levi's report, maybe it just didn't happen. That's on the, uh, left side of the road. You're one-twelve, so he would be one-oh-nine.
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 Okay, one-oh-nine, okay.
I hear you.
Definitely different, but I thought it would come out.
Well, the issue is if.
If they're gonna do something, maybe we are.
Yeah. If there be a fire there tomorrow and our, our army responding to it and building collapses or goes up in flames because it's old dry lumber and we allow them to continue without bringing under current building codes, then we'd be somewhat liable, responsible. Um, they, so they, they currently are occupying one of the three, as far as I know. We don't know. But they remodeled two of the three, again, without any, um, building permit and without any application for a change of use occupancy and defining what their use occupancy is gonna be because, um, you know, there's different classifications. Residential is just one. If someone applies for a building permit for a residential building, it falls on the residential building code. If they apply for a building in a paint shop, it's a high hazard, then it falls underneath classification, which is hazard, it's, it's a different set of, of criteria. We don't know what's going on out there. They, they constantly just, um, ignore Levi and the conversation that I had.
The, the, your doctor says that the attorney, you know, well, maybe contacting you to set an appointment to go out to.
The agreement was that the attorney contacted Mr. Mauer.
Oh, okay. But we've heard them make commitments three or four times and nothing comes up.
But I thought that our last conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, was that you were trying to gain some access to the property to make a determination and evaluation of the code violation could might be, and that was where you were headed as part of your contact with them and, you know, they didn't want you, want you to go in without, you know, their attorney being involved and so I think there's a benefit to getting into the building.
Well, ultimately, ultimately, if they apply for a use occupancy permit based upon what they're gonna use it for, and then just the inspection could verify that the building is actually meets conformity to the current codes of what they're using it for, but how do we get them to move? It's just been a year or so. A year plus. Okay.
And I thought if it wasn't used not.
Well, there is, but then, uh, Mr. Mauer, I thought about that, it's not a use occupancy by, uh, according to, uh, from UCC or that meets UCC codes.
You had a, a land use.
Right.
The zoning, they meant the zoning, yeah.
He said the buildings need.
Their own.
That it meets UCC and, uh.
Does Mr. Mauer find that there's benefit to meeting the attorney on site to look at the property with, with the property owner and his attorney? Was Randy agreeable to that?
Yes, oh, yes. Yeah, and they have a right to, uh, request that their attorney be present.
Sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's very, it was agreeable to that.
Meanwhile, they continue to occupy one of the buildings in violation of.
Are they separate buildings?
Yeah, there's three, there's three separate, uh, primary buildings.
Well, maybe the dialogue with the attorney would be, no, it's all, that's my fault. If you move the square that way, see if it'll come on.
But, but very, if you want to give them that, uh, do a little downtown for a few weeks and then, you know.
Well, to the twenty-fourth.
Right.
Do we know who his attorney is?
No, that's what I thought. We could talk, give them another two weeks, give them the next month.
Yeah, I, it's a tough one.
Basically, they're just basically building buildings without going around. And, and we tell them and they just keep going, and we tell them and they just keep going.
This isn't the first time I've had problems with, at least they're out of rough legs circling. Other places, what a mess. I was out there all the time, you can't do this.
I'm getting the complaints about this.
I think we should go with our, we might try to.
If, if this isn't resolved by the twenty-fourth, they get a notice that they may not cease to assist and not occupy the buildings until they get a use occupancy through a permit.
I would suggest because it's a building project.
Yeah.
Issue and non-examine issue that.
Yeah.
That whenever anything's, uh, taken further, that it'd be consulted with Randy Mauer.
Yes, I agree. Does that need to be a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make the motion then that if this isn't resolved and, and they don't submit an application for a use occupancy change and a, and, and a permit for the remodeling they're doing by the twenty-fourth, we would pursue to issue a cease to assist if they can, cannot occupy the buildings until they do so.
Something.
Okay, that.
I'd want to talk to Randy Mauer, I think you can go over the procedure, maybe just leave it as poorly that it, it's the enforcement procedure, could be pursued to the next step, enforcement order, so I guess what we have there.
What, and basically?
There may be notice requirements.
But, but you're then the relationship, you could, that if there's not a, uh, main party, the attorney, so Randy Mauer.
By the twenty-fourth, yeah, well, it's either resolved or there's ongoing communication by the twenty-fourth.
Right.
Okay, well, the motion was made a second, does the paper say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, last month, Arthur, you brought up Strecker.
Yep.
Yep. You got pictures?
Yes, because this is the front, where she's complaining that the snow and ice is destroying.
And you, you talked to her?
I was there on Saturday, no one was there.
Oh.
I opened the door.
That's the west neighbor, right?
Yeah. Now, this is back to side and you can see it's just as deteriorated and destroyed back to side here as it is on the front. Okay. I, I don't see any evidence that supports him claiming entirely on, on the snow plowing. And if, if it did, then what are we, we, what could we do differently in snow plowing that it wouldn't continue to happen? I don't think there's anything we can do. What is the, uh, um, right of way on a state roof?
Is it, uh-
Sixteen and a half.
On the, on the state roof?
Uh, it can change when the, when a development or something goes in, it goes to 25. But no, they're all, all roads are sixteen and a half to start.
Okay, it's, it's 20 feet, six inches from his porch to some other 20 feet.
From the front of his porch.
From, I hope on that trim, that's right. It's just too close to the road and I, I guess I think that, I know, you know, he told you that he thinks that the salt destroyed it. But it's, it's, it's not just destroyed here, the whole porch is shot, I mean, the whole carpet indoor, uh, is, is-
So who sends a notice that it's not township's responsibility?
Well, how, how do you handle, um, mail offices when they complain about-
Fix them.
Who?
If we hit them, we fix them.
If we know, we hit them.
Yeah, we fix them.
Well, I, I think this is a state roof, they pay us to plow. I don't think we should be using taxpayer's money to fix his, his porch when all we are is a subcontractor plowing the roads for the, for the sake of safety and, um-
I think the boards underneath are deteriorating.
I, I think he should be told that if he has a problem with the way it's plowed, he should talk to the, the state. The state can give us instructions how to, how to plow, otherwise.
We have to send him something because he stopped at my day, my house the other day and wanted to know what the reply was. I don't, this is not my decision, this is a board action, this will come from all three supervisors. So.
The porch is in terrible condition.
I don't doubt he, he could think it's from, well, from the plowing, but-
Is there any way you could prove the age or the fractures or?
Well, it's all, it's all, it's, it's, it's even, I could see back, the whole porch is, is shot, but it's worn thin. And like I say, back that side is just as frayed on the edges as back the front.
With, without the snow and salt, it's the part that he's complaining about from the railing out, which sees all the rains, which sees all the sunshine, you know, the out.
So, as, as here, now the bushes are, are covering it, but it's the same thing here, it's all fallen. Which is, I'm looking back that side, your, your snow is not hitting that side. I think it's a combination of, of once it's, once it became, once, once it became compromised, it just deteriorated further.
All he wanted, but all, and, and it's so simple what he wanted to do. You can see already.
He did, he replaced.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just that strip.
Yeah. Did you see them grow?
Should, should we take your, well, just to take your-
I, I don't know why we should use his neighbor's taxpayer's money to fix his porch if it's not there.
What do we think something like that would cost?
Well, it's so shot, you, you, it wouldn't be practical just to replace, uh, 12 inches down.
It, it ain't 12, is it?
Well, it's wrapped, he's wrapped down.
Oh, yes, wrapped down, I, uh-
Like I say, the wood, the wood underneath is rotten and, and cracked and deteriorated. I mean, I don't know, worst case scenario, we could pay a contract amount to plow that road, right? And if we don't get any snow, we still get the full amount. Last winter, we probably didn't get, we probably didn't use up, but then some winters you use more.
Right. I think in the end, it all, it uses itself out.
We had money, and obviously we had some money left over from last year, we would offer him $300 to resolve it.
300 even can be fixed cheaper than that.
Okay, well, you tell me.
Well, what does a strip of that cost?
I don't, we don't wanna fix it, we'll just reimburse some money.
A strip of that, I imagine they have leftovers from jobs somewhere that they throw in the landfill. And all you do is take some roofing nails and pack it fast, Jerry.
Couple hundred dollars.
Without assuming responsibility.
It has to come from the highway account.
Yeah. It will not, it won't pass. I will not be able to give it to the county.
Then, then I, then I, then I wouldn't do it because if it's, as, you know-
Can't be legal fuel.
No, it's not allowable.
Then we, if, if we could reverse him out of the, what Pennsylvania, the state pays us, I would go for it, but not, not the taxpayer's money.
Okay. So, how, how's he getting in board?
Do you do a letter?
Board took no action.
Oh, then he'll be at my house again.
The board decides we're not convinced that it's township's responsibility that he should attempt to talk to the state. And if they wanna plow differently, then, because you could fix it 10 times and if it's, if, if he's right, if it's, if it's the plowing and we keep plowing the same way, then we didn't accomplish anything. I don't think it's the plowing. I don't believe it's the plowing, I don't believe there's-
You know, rather than have Carol try to word something here, maybe you could word it, give it to her.
Okay, okay.
That would suit me.
Okay. Because I'll tell him, I, I missed him, but I, I was able to take pictures and I noticed back to side, which is clearly is not receiving, receiving, um, you know, plow. And because we cannot, cannot come out of funds that we receive from the state, we are, we, we do not deal, it's our responsibility to-
Because this way, if he comes down to the township again, will Carol provide it?
Okay. Yeah, I'll do that. Any other items that I'm missing regarding, um, township residents, concerns and issues? Okay, we have solicitor's report, do you have anything?
Well, I think as I am authorized, the, uh, the conference with the judge, he actually presented a field, uh, sounders, I see longer, later on, but, uh, that conference, uh, doesn't go on very often.
What, what possibly could that conference accomplish?
Well, what they're asking for, the, the balance due to file, are asking for an order from the judge directing, you know, the father's name.
Earl.
Earl, no.
Ken, Ken, Ken Martin.
To provide certain documents.
And he refuses to do that.
And the judge might say, well, if you give, if you give an actual number, he's gonna know if they might be sanctioned against you.
But now Marlin and Christina are withdrawing their application.
Well, I have not heard anything from their council, I've been following to him, destroying their, for Carol and for the, the, what, that is under due business concerning that. I'm gonna find out what their intentions were, not obviously Carol overall, from the attorney's side. I do not know, Jerry, but they're intending to do-
Their intentions are to withdraw. Their, probably, Father Mal's not going to provide first his records of his panel for the past five years that he thinks is irrelevant to what this hearing and this panel application is.
Maybe we'll find out first, like, uh, I can't tell.
Would it be beneficial for you to notify the judge and say it's been withdrawn and you save yourself some time?
I don't know if it's gonna be withdrawn, you're telling them, but I, I can't tell that to the judge. I don't know, so I, I make that with the state.
His letter says, "Recnock Township to Board of Supervisors, we will no longer be able to build a canal. We ask you to give back our escrow money, which is $2,200, and we would appreciate our building permit dollars back as well, that was $100. Thank you." It's pretty, it's obvious to me that they're withdrawing, but-
But they have to have a lawyer in the court to show them that they're basing it on that.
That really is, is not their, uh, their problem to stop a case.
Yes.
They can stop, they can stop wanting to build a canal, but their, their complaint was from the other party.
Well, they followed the appeal from the application, the zoning case.
Right. So in other words, it has to be the other people that are satisfied.
Well, there would have to be some sort of stipulation there, um, signed by everybody that the case is gonna be settled, discontinued and ended, settled, closed and ended.
Maybe they still wanna see the father's records.
If the case is, you know, if the zoning case goes away, then that party's not there. They don't have the ability to get his, his records if the case is, the underlying case is wrong.
Understand. Sad, sad situation, but I don't know. They, they somehow Ken Martin, Father Mal got too involved in the case and then they used that to, to their leverage and-
It's just, just a shame.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the reports as we have?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve those reports.
Okay, motion to approve this roadmaster engineer, SEO, solicitor's reports, is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made in second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have a new business, we have a allocation of Recnock Fireman Relief Funds of $41,327.33 to the Bowman'sville Fire Company's and $4,591.33 to the Adams Town Fire Company's. And this is already deposited in township account?
Yeah, and it's actually $41,327.33 to Recnock Fireman Relief. They have one fund for both Bowman'sville and Five Pointville.
Okay, now, and that is used for what? What can they use that for?
You guys could probably help them out on that.
It's a state roof funding, which obviously, it's kinda like what you were just speaking of as your Pennsylvania route, you know, there's only certain things you can purchase, you can only purchase, uh, training, gear, there's, trust me, there's a list of things we get audited every two or three years and they go through it pretty, pretty rough.
Who manages that, that Recnock Fireman Relief? Some from each company?
Correct, yes. So there's a, there's actually a separate board that sits on that, um, and the relief is basically split right down the middle, so the Bowman'sville gets half of it and Five Pointville gets the other half. Our officers are kinda joint officers, we have, you know, the president might be from Bowman'sville or the president might be from Five Pointville, it kinda depends on how the elections go.
And we get a copy of the audited report from Order General's office.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to disperse those funds?
I'd definitely make that motion. To disperse to, uh, Recnock, $41,327.33 to Adams Town, $4,591.33.
Second, okay, the motion was made in a second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, um, we have a, a letter from Macklin Engineering to inspect bridges, next five years, four years. What action do we need?
All right, I have a question first.
Okay.
We've been having these inspections for years.
This is state, state road bridges, right? Not, not county.
These are any-
Not, not township.
They're township bridges.
Oh, there are township bridges.
Any bridge that spans 20 feet or more.
Right.
Now, these include bridges like Black Creek, Bemid School, Grand Mill, where they're sitting on other township lines.
I have to tell you, what I do is I get a bill from them and they tell me how much each bridge is actually cost and I send a bill to each of them. It comes out of our liquid fuels, but I send a bill to whoever has a joining bridge.
They're notifying us because we're gonna pay for it.
We, you have to pay for it, it's, you have to.
Or the state would be-
This is the state. This is the state. This is who they awarded it to.
Right.
And we do get our money from the other municipalities that we have joint bridges with.
Half of it.
Half of, yes.
The ones that are joint.
Yes.
So this is over a four-year period, what kinda costs, what kinda five-year, what kinda costs?
I don't remember, honestly, I'm not even sure. It comes right out of our liquid fuel money. We don't have to pay the bill, it automatically comes out of our liquid fuel money. And then I bill the other municipalities that have and they pay it out of their liquid fuels.
But it's taking money away from roads?
It has to. I mean, we either pay them or we pay somebody else, another engineer.
The other municipalities got a copy of the-
Absolutely. I scan them and I send them to them.
I just talked, recently talked to these town, uh-
Oh, yeah.
And their roadmaster played, seen, hasn't seen a report for a while.
Well, I have them all scanned and emailed to them that they've received them, so.
This is-
Their office manager is not giving them to them.
Right.
Ah.
That's what's happening.
Government manager.
That's correct, yes.
Things are operating in-
Really, I thought for sure he probably would send it, but he just-
It goes along with the bill.
He questioned me with it, I thought he had one, no, I've never seen one.
Over there, things operate a lot different.
How many bridges are there? Five or six? Okay.
That is, like, over there-
Do we need to make a motion on this or something?
Yeah, I just wanna, over there, if you want some nuts and bolts, you will go to the office from them and get a purchase order first.
Oh, yeah?
Anything you go.
I, I make a motion that we take care of this request for bridge inspection, either it is, pay for it, bill with other townships involved.
Okay, the motion was made in second. To proceed with the bridge inspection program, it was second. Does the favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have, um, Marlin Sauter's letter here, as I read earlier, requesting the release of escrow and the building permit and, um, I would suggest we honor his request and then whatever comes out of your conference, if it changes, we can address that.
I make a motion then that we do honor his request that he be reimbursed for the building permit and, uh, also this escrow money in the event that this is accepted by the court.
Okay, the motion was made to honor his request and is there a second?
Do we have to wait till the court? I mean, that-
Well, okay, do you want to just take that?
I, I don't think that.
I don't think, I mean, they're asking for it, I mean, they're-
They're entitled to it because they're not doing it.
They're saying they're not gonna go forward with the building. It makes common sense, I mean, it's reasonable to believe that they're gonna, you know, they're not gonna pursue the zoning approval. But until I get that form over to them and it's dealt with, you know, in the course of the lawsuits and complaints, I'm gonna, that's all I have.
We're gonna short the last.
Disconnect the court and you did second.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion was made in second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then you have a contractor agreement for the, uh, party that works with Carol on the QuickBooks. I guess this is her yearly contract she gives you?
Yeah, and I don't use her very often anymore.
Okay, if you need this to-
Yeah, if I would need her, I would use her.
What's the oversight?
Yeah, we can go back to that.
Oh, did I jump over something?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, let's, let's address the contract for the, the help in QuickBooks, and at $50 an hour plus the conditions.
Do you have a motion that we extend that contract or pickles?
I second. Okay, the motion was made to accept it in a second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I thought that was part of the, anyway, we have a, I guess the comment was made about some of the oversized loads that, especially recently, PPNL's been using some very large. And whether we would look at an oversized overweight special haul permit on our township roads. When I first heard about this, I thought it sounded like a pretty good idea, but in hindsight, is, is the trouble of implement that going to maybe be more, more bothersome than what it would bring in. I asked Bill, if we were to pursue application permit that oversized overweight vehicles would have to apply with, they have to be in ordinance, they have to be advertised, and.
I recall, I think this is regularly by the state, is what I recall, I think we had this before.
Yeah, I think we talked about this.
I think, I think there are state regulations, state statutes, it's been about, I don't know, thirty, forty years ago, maybe.
Right.
I can't remember the name of the road, I don't know if it's logging they were doing. I'll, I'll, I'll put that possibility into my research in there.
You know, what, I guess the, I don't, but I guess the whole point of that would be that, I wonder if there's a way that if someone would apply for, because I do know, especially superloads, they have to get pending approval. How we would get, at least in the loop of knowing, I know they call us, but, you know, I wonder how we would be able to get into the loop of that as far as. Yeah, because, I mean, it's obvious, the PPNL, they're there, there's going to be lots of, you know, superloads they use to replace equipment, you know, they had a spare of something there that they're taking somewhere else, they're going to bring another one back again.
But they stay on state roads, it wouldn't affect it.
But they don't.
I know, I know, I said it, they did.
We could request they not go on the roads, I guess, but.
Ross, you remember the name of that road or that?
Well, I was thinking of logging this.
Sure, I remember, that's Silver Hill.
Yeah, and that was.
They did damage the rest.
Yes, you're right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm back.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I can report back next month, you know, maybe the information before me, but I do remember researching this question as far as the procedure to limit usage. Sometimes they have to worry financial security, but if they don't, if they damage the big roads, there's mechanisms to do all of that.
And, and maybe what the state has in place is good enough, however, we have no way of knowing, we don't get notified at all, and that's, I think, the key to the whole thing.
It costs, we don't get proof of insurance or anything like that, if you drive on an armed road, they go across one of our, I think, or bridges or right crossings, and it fails, you know, what happens then? If that's, with the PPNL's upstate, they had a transformer up toward Allentown Road, they have a spare at our substation here, they drove it up there, well, they're going to bring one back in. So now, they constantly, they're going to have spare, they're constantly, how many times, it might only be once or twice a year that they do that, but it's going to be there for a lifetime.
Yeah, they ran me off Boulder Hill Road one time. I don't know why they were coming down Boulder Hill Road with these two oversized loads, but I had to drive into Rose's driveway to get out of the way.
Why did you stop there?
Well, I, I guess I don't want to spend hundreds of dollars in advertising and posting and then get $75 per application, it just doesn't seem to make sense. So do a little research, and let us know next month. Okay, do you have anything else? Do you have anything else? Okay. That, that concludes our meeting tonight, is there, we had a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
It's second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.